City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1389. Today is Monday, February 7th. It is 8:00 PM. Let's start by standing and sign the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Constitution of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. I'm gonna start it off. Let the clerk call the roll.
Adams.
Present.
Brown.
Here.
Clark.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Holt. Moore.
Here.
Sylvester.
Here.
I need a motion to excuse Councilwoman Holt.
A motion to excuse Councilwoman Holt.
Been moved in properly second. Let it be known by the sound of voting aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Alright, motion passes. Moving on to the second item on the agenda, the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? Are there any additions or corrections to be made?
I'd like to make an addition, please, or correction or revise, rather.
Okay.
My request to discuss and acknowledge Wynton Woods students who are employed at Kroger. I'd like to extend that to employ by businesses in the city of Forest Park. So Kroger would not just be the only employer.
Okay. So you're making a, you wanna make a correction to the minutes about what you stated? Or you wanna add an item to the, to next work session?
I wanna make a correction.
Okay.
I don't know if it's even really a correction, though, because originally that is what I said. But I think that we need to extend it outside of Kroger and include all businesses for students employed for the city of Forest Park.
Okay. We'll have to reflect that in the minutes. The clerk has copied that. Alright, moving on to item number three, which is presentation. So we are going to start with our presentation of recognition plaque for council, former councilwoman Diana Herbie. So, hold on a second. This mic is on. Okay, so, on behalf of the city of Forest Park, Forest Park City Council recognizes Diana Herbie for outstanding dedication and loyal service as a member of city council from July 25th, 2005, to November 30th, 2021. And we want to thank you for all your service.
Bear with me, because I wanna tell you a little story. I'm unashamed to say I'm 75 years old. My parents moved out to Forest Park when I was in high school. I went on to be a teacher for 14 years. And when I was a teacher, this man, the former mayor, was my labor consultant. I eventually went to work for the Ohio Education Association. We became colleagues. I started serving in northwest Ohio and after six years, got a transfer back here. By that time, the former mayor was living in Forest Park. He said, "You need to get involved in the community." And he said, "The best place to be is on environmental awareness." So I have been a member of environmental awareness for, I don't know how many years. I also have been involved in a local Democratic Club, the Women's Club, and then eventually ran for council. I, I, I wanna speak for Mr. Johnson as well as myself, because I know neither one of us do this for this kind of a reward. That's not why we do this. We do this out of service to our community. And that's the way we were raised, that you give back to your community. And I know that many of the people here do the same thing. I know we've got people who have come through to this position, through working in committees of the city, through parks and recreation, people who have come here through working with the school system, on baseball and basketball and soccer teams of their children. That's how we were raised, to give back to the community. And there are so many ways to serve this community. It's often been said, "You get the government that you deserve, either by voting or by not voting." You get the community that you deserve by either being involved or not being involved. I served on council, on the Human Resources Committee. Unfortunately, Councilwoman Holt's not here. She was the chair. She still may be the chair of that committee. She always would say what positions were available for people to serve. You can serve on parks and rec, you can serve on beautification, you can serve on environmental, stormwater. There are so many ways to serve through this community. You can serve as these people do, by running for council. You can serve in the Women's Club, you can serve on the Democratic Club. There's a Kiwanis Club in, in Green Hills that services this area. You can serve the schools. And, and I know our Parks and Recreation Commission is dying to have parents be available to volunteer to serve as coaches for sports teams for the children. Sometimes we can't do sports teams, because there aren't people available to do it. That's how you get the community that you want, and that's why we serve. Not for this. Thank you very much for this, that's nice, but that's not why we do it.
Yes, before we move on to the next one, does anyone on the, say, have any words for former Councilwoman Herbie? Go ahead.
First, I want to say thank you for your service to our amazing community. You have been a mentor to me, and I just really appreciate you, just kinda reaching back and helping move new leadership forward. So I just wanna appreciate, say, I appreciate your time and commitment to the community. Thank you.
And I'd like to echo that as well, but I'd like to also respond to something that you said. You said you were raised to give back to the community by being involved, serve on committees. And I just wanna tell you thank you. I remember when I first met you, I came in, 'cause I wanted to interview for a committee, and you said, "Well, what do you really wanna do?" And I said, "Well, this is what I wanna do." And so we got on this committee, and I've learned so much from you. Sometimes the best way to learn is just to sit back and watch and listen. And I've watched you, and I've listened to you, and you've been very consistent. And I'd like to tell you thank you for that. I also like to tell you thank you for calling me and for reaching out. I'd like to tell you thank you for taking the time to explain things to me that I didn't understand as a newcomer. I'd like to say thank you so much for your service. I'd like to say thank you for making the time to give back to people that you don't even know. So again, to echo what Councilwoman Ros, Dr. Rosalynn Moore has said, thank you. Thank you so much. And to our home audience, get involved. Get involved. Do something great. Change. Be the change that you want to see. Thank you so much for everything that you've done, not only for me, but also for the committee and for the city of Forest Park.
You know, I'd like to say thank you to Diana for everything that you've done for me, and really for your service to this community. You embody what, what makes Forest Park great. And, and we really, really, at least I do, really respect that, and I thank you for it. And hopefully, I can grow into those shoes one day. So, so thank you for everything that you've done. Thank you for, yeah. But really, I'd really like to thank you, though, for everything, and really how you've mentored and, and really sheltered me. So thank you very much for your service to our community.
Yes, I'd like to just add to that. I wanna say thank you to Diana. Congratulations on your years of service to the city of Forest Park. You've given me information and, and given me the best of information to help me try to move on to my steps in my council position. So we wish you Godspeed, and we thank you for what you've done for this community.
I remember, it was years ago, it was almost 10 years ago, I don't know, five, six, something like that. Anyways, it was a while ago. And I remember coming and you were helping me out with all the precincts and all these things that I had no idea about. And you welcomed me into your home and was so kind, and you were so kind to me. And I appreciate that. You've been able to be very helpful. You know, having that, you know, long institutional knowledge and being here has gone a long way. And so I hope the community as well knows just how instrumental you've been and helpful. Thank you so much for your service.
Okay, moving on to our next presentation of the night. Former mayor, if you would come up here, please. So, this is on behalf of the city of Forest Park, to Charles H. Johnson for outstanding dedication and loyal service as a member of city council from December 20th, 1999, to November 30th, 2021, serving as a second vice mayor, a first vice mayor, and as a mayor. So on behalf of the city, thank you for all your service, sir.
To you, a longtime Forest Park resident. I would say, as I've always said, when you look to Forest Park, you're looking at the best in all departments, police, fire, public works, on down the line, because we have people who have dedicated themselves to Forest Park, just as you, the council members, have. Many, many years ago, when I first came a member of council, I replaced a gentleman who had been elected to the legislature, and it was our former mayor, Wayne Coats. I was told by members of the committee that I served on at that time, which was the charter committee, and these were five gentlemen, all of whom were way, way smarter than me. They were all attorneys, some of them were Rhodes Scholars, some of them were founders of this community. And they said to me, very simply, "The way you become the best council member that you can become is to remember the people elected you to serve them and to provide a service to them. And the only way you can do that is to put everything else on the back burner. Forest Park has to be your number-one priority. You have to put everything else on the back burner, all personal beliefs, all desires, all goals, all those things you can do either later, or you can do while you're on council, but you can't do them together." And I would say that same thing to you. Remember that the people elected you to provide a service and to serve them, and I'm sure that you're all gonna do that. Thank you very much.
And just before we move on to our proclamation, I do wanna say, on behalf of myself, to Councilwoman Herbie and former Mayor Johnson, you both have been incredible mentors to me. It was, I guess, a little over two years ago that I ran into both of you at a county party meeting, and you were so knowledgeable, so welcoming, and very encouraging of me deciding to run for office. The, the information, you two are both institutions to this community. You carry so much knowledge and history, and honestly, this city would not be in such a strong position if it wasn't for the service that both of you have given over the years. So I wanna thank you both. Okay, so moving on.
I just wanna say something myself, as well. Not elected, of course, but I wanna thank both, the councillor, former councillor Herbie and former mayor Chuck Johnson, for the opportunity to serve this community. If you wouldn't have been on the committee and, and, you know, you're part of my hiring process, so it's deeply appreciated. I really enjoy it here. And on behalf of the staff as well, you guys have, have shown strong, steady judgment and exhibited that throughout your careers, but I've, I've witnessed it in my short three years here, that I get around, I've seen a lot of council meetings and a lot of councils, and I've never, Mayor Johnson could, could teach a master's class in how to, to run a meeting and to, you know, and to, and to serve the public. And, and I greatly appreciate his steady hand and his confidence and his, his advice, as well as, you know, we've had a nice, long discussion a couple, a couple of days ago, and I expect to have those go into the future as well. And I think, you know, you're, as a, as a city manager, as in anyone, you know, it's better to, God gave you two ears and one mouth. It's better to sit and listen and take advice of the people that have been here before you and, and know the community. And I think, there's nobody knows the community better than, than both of you. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve.
If I may, this is for you, Mr. Johnson. I came from a bigger city. The mayor was not accessible, he wasn't touchable, and he wasn't available. You sort of have been touchable, accessible, and available. You are a man of few words, but when you open your mouth to say what you need to say, it is heard, it is understood, it is concise, and it is clear. I remember the conversation we had when Terrence and I both had first got on council and the advice that you gave. Little did I know that I would be putting it into play within hours. So I'd like to tell you thank you for being accessible, for being approachable, and for being touchable. That is what the people need, that is what I've needed. And I remember our first encounter, and I talked to you on the phone, and you said, "Oh, you'll be ready in about two years." And here we are, two years later. So I just wanna say thank you.
I just wanna say thank you for also being a mentor. I had the privilege of running on the slate with Diana and Chuck, and just the knowledge that I've obtained from that, both that partnership and that collaboration. I also study you, and so I do observe and watch and learn. And I really enjoy listening to the history and the knowledge you have regarding our community. And so I just, again, take this time to relax and, and spend time with your family. And I know you're gonna continue to serve this great city, and so congratulations and thank you for your service.
I just wanna say, of course, an additional big thank you. The Sagittarius in me can be a little on fire sometimes, and thank you so much for, you know, always having an, having an open door. You know, those texts and calls and, you know, being able to give me that, you know, you know, just very good guidance and good advice. I really, really appreciated it. It's meant a lot in terms of how, you know, you know, how I approach certain things, and those things are going even beyond the walls of, of this municipal, or, you know, this municipal building. And so, you know, what you've given to us has been far more than even the historical knowledge. It's, it's helping with the confidence and helping us to feel as though we certainly can accomplish the task that we are given. So thank you so, so much for all the work and the mentorship.
And the city will be erecting statues in your honor. Publicly funded dollars, no. I jest, I jest.
That is just a joke.
I'm joking. So, moving on to our third presentation, it's going to be a proclamation. So the city of Forest Park has a proclamation that this month, as everyone knows, is Black History Month, so we are recognizing that with this official proclamation here, and I will sign this after council today. So, we are going to move on to the fourth item on the agenda, which is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or ask questions of concern to them. So when recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. So does anyone have any comments?
Chuck Johnson, Forest Park citizen. I know that at this time, the, both the Planning Commission and the council are going to be considering new developments, housing developments. I would ask that you look long and hard at any developments that we, that you choose to undertake. Housing is great. We need more housing. We need as much housing as we can have. Having said that, I would urge you to be, look very carefully at the, the whole issue of housing. Where are they placed? Who's building them? What, what those structures are? I know that from, you know, there, there can be a lot of pitfalls that you have to make sure that you don't run into. One, one of the main things to keep in mind is this. Developers and contractors are salesmen. Their whole purpose is to sell you. Like almost any other salesman, salesman, including myself, I am going to say what I think it takes to get you to buy my product. I'm gonna tell you the truth, but I'm gonna tell you my version of the truth. And I'll, I'll add to that just this. We are a very, very unique community. There are certain kinds of housing developments that we just cannot put in certain areas because they don't fit. So when you're looking at the housing, don't look just at what it, what you're putting there. Look at what is already there and how this particular development that you're looking at is going to fit in with what is already there. Because even though I might tell you as, as a salesman or contractor, these houses can be sold for X number of dollars, we're gonna start at X price. If this is in an area where there are not already houses and residential, living area dwellings, close to that, I don't know that as a buyer, I'm going to want to buy that house in that area, because I gotta look at having that house for 30 years, or 20 years, 25, 30 years, and I gotta look at how much is the property that's already there going to potentially devalue the house that I just bought. So as a buyer, I'm gonna be looking at it very differently than the city and the builder. So when you're looking at these things, look at all of the sides of it, not just from the side of the developer, but the side of it that says, "What is going to be the value of this property 10 years from now?" And when that person who bought that house initially sells it, who's gonna be the person that buy it? And what are their motivations gonna be?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Very well received.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Are there any other comments from the public? Other, two other people? No. Right. Alright, we're gonna move on to agenda item number five, reports from council members, starting with Councilmember Adams.
Thank you very much, and good evening, everyone. For the Beautification Committee, I just want to put out our Arbor Day, which is going to be on April the 28th. We will hopefully get some more information out. We'll work with Waycross Television to try to get that put out, and we'll also work with our secretary, our clerk of council, I'm sorry, Ms. Boyd. But please, try to save the date for April the 28th, for Arbor Day. We'd like for people to come out and participate in that. And I don't have any report yet for our Quality of Life Committee, but we are gonna be working on that and hopefully getting that committee up and running very soon.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Adams. I have an item on for the next work session. Is there any other item you wanna add to the agenda?
Yes, I would like to discuss the Forest Park Senior Center, some of the concerns that were brought to our attention. And also too, for the next work session, given what our former mayor has advised, I would like for us to look again at the areas that we have decided to rezone for new housing, just to review it one more time, to ensure that indeed, the decisions that have been made are going to be of quality and in the best interest of our city.
Alright, just for clarification, you wanna review of the rezoning, or you wanna review of the full proposals, if there are any on, on land?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Brown. I would like to review of the proposal for, I would like a review of the proposal, for us, just to review it, please.
Okay. Alright, I got that down. Moving on, is gonna be a report from Councilmember Clark.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. This evening, all I have to report is our Black Business Spotlight. All the businesses that wanted to be nominated have been identified, and so voting has commenced. And an announcement will be made on who that winner is at our next council meeting and the award presented at their place of business. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Clark. Moving on, or do you have any items to add to the next work session? Okay, moving on, Councilmember Harrison.
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. Do you have any items to add to the work session?
No.
Alright, next is Holt, and she is absent, so moving on to Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do not have a report at this time, but I do wanna take this time to congratulate the Cincinnati Bengals, and we wish them great, great success. So that completes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do you have any items to add to the work session?
No, I do not.
Okay, and moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
I'm, as mayor, do not have a report at this time.
Okay, any items to add to next work session?
No.
Alright, and that concludes item number five, reports, reports from council members. Moving on to item number six, the mayor's report, that is mine, and I do not have any reports at this time, but I do want to echo Councilmember Moore's sentiments and congratulate the Cincinnati Bengals for not only winning, 'cause we haven't met in a, in a while, but not only winning their first playoff game in over 30 years, but the game after that, and then they're now becoming AFC champions and going to the Super Bowl, so we wish them all the best of luck. But I do want to reach out to the Bengals directly, if they get to watch this, to remind them that there are Cincinnati Bengals fans all over Hamilton County, and we would also like the city of Forest Park staff to be able to share in the celebration and hold the commemorative game ball. So please, Cincinnati Bengals, reach out to us. We have a lot of Bengals fans out here in the city of Forest Park, 'cause we are members of Hamilton County, too, and that is going to conclude my report.
We have some future, some folks that we can put in the filter, too. Our boys won the state championship.
Absolutely, absolutely, 'cause we do have a, we have a wonderful football team in our Wynton Woods Warriors, Division II state champions. Okay, so that concludes my report. Moving on to item number seven, the city manager's report. Doc?
Well, I keep it short and sweet. Again, I wanna echo what I said earlier and congratulate Mayor Johnson and Councilwoman Herbie for their years of service and thank them for everything they've done for the city. I did, one of, one of the things we did learn about recently is the city was awarded two grants for body cams for our police department. And we received the federal grant, and these are approximately, approximately $60,000. And the, there's a state grant that also just became available this year, or, and the city has been notified that we've been awarded 30, approximately $30,000. That pays for about two-thirds of the cost of the body cams, and we're gonna move forward with, we'll have some legislation to accept those grants. We haven't been officially awarded, notified, or have any piece of paper that says it, where we can accept it, so we're still waiting for those notifications in writing. And, but we're moving forward, and we expect to be able to, you know, talk about body cams and how they're gonna be implemented and when they're gonna be implemented coming up over the next several months, so I look forward for that.
So I look forward for that. That's really the biggest news we've got recently, besides the Bengals going to the Super Bowl. So, any other questions? I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, Don. Does anyone have any questions for the city manager? Okay, moving on to item number eight, which is other reports, starting with our law director, John Whiteoff.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. A few items that I've been working on since the last council meeting. I did approve the contract between the police department and Exxon Enterprises for the body cams. Also, we've been working diligently with Chris Anderson regarding a road out of Chase Plaza that is somehow, over the decades, has been privately owned. And we're trying to work with the owner's estate, he's now deceased, to try to get that property publicly dedicated to be exactly what it is, a road at Chase Plaza. And I also worked on with Paul Brim and approved ordinance number one regarding the request for bids on the property at twenty-two fifteen Waycross Road. If there are no questions, that would be the end of my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, John. Moving on to the clerk of council, Sally Boyd.
I do not have a report this evening.
Okay, and thank you for that, Sally. Moving on to agenda item number nine, new business. We have two items on the agenda, starting with ordinance number zero-one dash twenty-twenty-two. So this is an ordinance authorizing the city manager to initiate a request for proposals to sell and redevelop city-owned property located at twenty-two fifteen Waycross Road and declaring an emergency. Point of order, you stated that these were posted as?
They were posted, so they can actually, there can be a motion to read the entire rule.
Okay, so. Okay. So I need a motion to suspend the rules requiring the reading in full on two separate days and read by title only ordinance number zero-one dash twenty-twenty-two and zero-two dash twenty-twenty-two.
A motion to suspend the rules requiring a reading of ordinance twenty, uh, zero-one twenty-twenty-two to zero-two twenty-twenty-two.
Is there a second?
Okay.
It's been moved improperly seconded, and there is discussion. So with this RFP, the city is seeking proposals for, from developers with the financial capability and management expertise to purchase twenty-two fifteen Waycross Road property. It's the old Kmart property near Hamilton Avenue and converted into a successful commercial development, consistent with the goals of the comprehensive redevelopment plan. The current zoning is planned business as, that allows for retail and office uses. However, the city supports and indeed prefers a development plan that requires a rezoning of the subject property. Specifically, city officials have identified the following uses as possibilities, which is manufacturing, technology, medical services, professional office, e-commerce, or logistics. And this is an RFP that has been prepared by staff and approved by the city solicitor. Staff recommends approval of this ordinance to begin receiving proposals. The deadline to receive proposals will be February twenty-fourth. And I would urge adoption of this ordinance. So let the clerk call the role on the motion to adopt.
Brown.
Yes.
Clark. Harrison.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Motion passes. Moving on to ordinance number zero-two dash twenty-twenty-two. Would the clerk read that ordinance by title only?
Ordinance number zero-two dash twenty-twenty-two. An ordinance amending section one-five-six point one-four of the codified ordinances of the City of Forest Park as it relates to fees for work and public rights away and declaring an emergency.
Okay, is there a motion, I mean, is there any discussion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Uh, well, yes. This is the annual right-of-way.
What, I need a, I'm sorry, I need a, I need a motion first.
We adopt ordinance number O-two dash twenty-twenty-two.
It's been moved improperly seconded, now is there any discussion, Councilmember?
Yes, retake. Okay. The annual right-of-way utility permit fees for twenty-twenty-two and the registration fees for twenty-twenty-one have been processed per PUCO order. This is done every year. The staff gathers all the costs associated with managing the right-of-way locations for utility companies working in Forest Park. The fees have a variance of going up and down each year and based on activities of the fees collected in the previous two years of activities. Once this information has been gathered, invoices are sent out, usually at the beginning of the year, to the utilities companies for payment. The updated twenty-twenty-two fees have been included in an ordinance for twenty-twenty-two. The new permit fees is twenty-four dollars and ninety-five cents, and the registration fee is twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents. And with that, I move that we adopt ordinance number O-two dash twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you, Councilmember Sylvester. Would the clerk call the role on the motion to adopt?
Clark.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Sylvester.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes. Motion passes six-zero. And there are no other ordinances on the agenda. So we are going to adjourn this council member meeting. Let it be known by the sound of voting aye to adjourn. Motion carries, council meeting is adjourned.